These lessons are designed to build confidence in the water. Teaching fundamental swimming mechanics and water safety, register online at pueblo.us on the Parks and Rec, or by calling our offices 719-553-2790. The public meeting for the Safe Routes to School grant to construct multi-use sidewalks and connections to give students a direct route to the school entrance at Hoff Elementary will be this Wednesday at 6:00 PM. And it'll be at Hoff Elementary, and Public Works staff will be there to answer any questions. If you need any information or have questions ahead of time, please call Public Works at 719-553-2295 for more info. PD, our recruits will be completing the PTO program this March. Once those individuals complete training, and for the first time in years, we will have all beats covered by an officer on Watch One. This is a huge deal, especially as we move towards summer and the increased callouts. And the narcotics unit destroyed under court order fifty-four gambling machines late last week from our first enforcement effort of the new municipal ordinance. Enforcement efforts are ongoing, and that concludes my report.
Okay, any questions or comments by council? Sarah Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions, what time is Watch One?
I don't have an answer for that, but if the chief or somebody?
Oh, so like during the day? That's great, congratulations. And my second question was around the Da Vinci Museum. When you said Chief of Staff McCain that things are going to move fast, what's the timeline?
It's...
So you have the outdoor lease on the agenda tonight for final approval. We'll be doing a walkthrough with them on Friday. The city is going to be moving the equipment to the Pope Walk Building that was put in the Sports Performance Center until we find a best use for it. So that'll be happening in the next couple of weeks, and I would assume that they would build, they would start their construction and their design work on the project, and they're looking to open in the fall. So it's, it'll be very timely.
Okay, Council of Boston?
It's really exciting to hear the airport getting recognized. We got some real nice runways out there, hopefully we can expand there and take good advantage of those.
Yeah, not only was the city, so the city was recognized specifically for the airport, but Region Two, so different areas of I-25 that were paved last summer, if you remember, were also received paving awards. So Pueblo County, City of Pueblo as a whole, received three of the, three of the awards that were in our region. So that was, that was really nice to see that the paving is now coming to Southern Colorado instead of always being in Colorado Springs and Denver.
Okay, anybody else? We're good? Okay, let's move on to the next item agenda is B is lobbyist update by Gil Romero, Capital Success Group. Bill, before we go into that, I just want to let you know that Council Regina Maishri is on Zoom. And do we have the update from Capital Success Group? You're not on Zoom?
He may, they may be stuck in a meeting, I texted to see.
I'm sorry?
I texted them, they're not on Zoom right now. I'm more than happy to kind of give a brief overview of what they're tracking and what they sent out. So if you check your email this morning, Alyssa sent all of council, the city Pueblo, City of Pueblo Legislative Update, I'm just kind of winging it, going off the cuff right now. But so far, forty-five days into the one hundred and twenty-day legislative session, so far, two hundred and eighty-two bills have been introduced in the House, one hundred and seventy-eight in the Senate. We're seeing more and more come in. Usually they introduce all of them at the beginning for this legislative session. For some reason, they're holding off on some of these. Some of the ones that impact Pueblo that we're watching, it's municipal authority over certain land, HB 1029, that did pass the House chamber. I believe that, that this would be more beneficial for Pueblo because it concerns the overview of land outside of city limits, so say, mountain park, areas like that, even the airport industrial park, that gives city land a little more opportunity for us to regulate that and keep it in our control. The big one that I know our city clerk here was following closely is the SB 25-01. That's the Colorado Voting Rights Act. This was a gigantic bill. This was probably the most important bill when it comes to the legislature with the highest priority. There were a lot of issues in it that could have impacted our municipality, mostly in a financial and liability sense. So they spent, I would say, two days amending it, and we're reviewing the amendments to that right now. From what I understand and what Marissa Stoller here has gone through, it's not going to have that harsh of an impact on Pueblo, correct? So, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think the, what the item on that that was going to be the most cost, that was going to give the most cost to cities was the multilingual ballot requirement. And that got cut back in one of the amendments pretty severely. So instead of requiring all cities and municipalities to have the multilingual ballot, they cut that back to only cities and municipalities within the twenty counties that have a certain percentage of electors that speak a language other than English. And so Pueblo does not fall into one of those counties. I asked the, I talked to the county clerk about it, and we are not one of those counties. So we would not have to provide the Spanish language ballots, which would incur the printing costs for that. I do think that there is still some significant concern when it comes to the efforts of this act, just because of the way that it's written, it very much tries to overrule home rule authority. And it says very clearly in the Colorado Constitution that municipalities are allowed to run their own elections in the way that they see fit. And so this is kind of a direct challenge to that. They're trying to write in legislation in Title I, which deals only with state and county elections, when there's a whole nother section and a whole nother title that actually has municipal elections and information in there. So we applaud like the intent and the desire to create this kind of bill that tries to make sure that everyone can vote and that there's no barriers to voting. But this, the way that this particular bill was written is, is very difficult for, for us to see how it's going to accomplish what they want, what the, what they want to accomplish.
Okay.
Excuse me, another one that I know is near and dear to council is SB 25-004, Regulating Child Care Center Fees. That did pass the Senate chamber and was introduced in the House. There are some amendments on it. Shifts from a strict twenty-five-dollar cap on a waitlist fee to a refundable waitlist fee structure, allowing families on a waitlist for over six months to get a refund if they withdraw, with providers allowed to deduct a reasonable administrative fee. Deposit fee rules were relaxed, allowing centers to apply them at any point instead of only toward the first month's tuition. Transparency requirements now mandate that families receive fee schedules at registration, and providers must keep them updated. Clarifications ensure the bill applies to all childcare programs, not just centers, and exempt signed contracts and guaranteed spot fees from refund rules. Enforcement focuses on intentional violations, giving leniency for the first time administrative errors. Another one that we were following that you signed a letter on to amend or oppose as-is was the Senate Bill 25-062. That was the failure to appear charges in municipal court. It did pass the Senate chamber with amendments, but the amendments that were added were not the ones requested by the city. Going forward, I know that there is another bill on the House side. It's HB 25-1276. This is the court actions related to failure to appear in court, and this is actually a CML-initiated bill. The, the hope on this would be working that the initial failure to appear could be killed if this one goes through on the House, which is not as harsh and doesn't, we don't disagree with it in the same ways as the, the other one. And if that's the case, that would be a win for Pueblo going on our legislation that we did not like. The other one that's coming up this week that you'll see a resolution on the agenda is the Fairness and Transparency in Municipal Court Concerning Measures to Ensure the Municipal Court Defendants Are Subject to Similar Conditions As State Court Defendants. This is the one that we spoke about last week. There's a resolution in opposition of this. The mayor and other city staff are going up to Denver this Wednesday to testify in opposition on this. If you want to know more and want to sit down and go over this with me, I'm more than happy to. Prior to Wednesday and us going up there, but I think you'll see it on the, the resolution that you see tonight. See what else we got, sorry. I wasn't prepared for this. The other one that can have an impact on Pueblo that came through is HB 25-1040. This is adding nuclear energy as a clean energy resource. This passed the first committee, passed the second reading, now it's going on to the third reading in the House. What this bill does is it considers nuclear energy as a clean energy resource in Colorado when it comes to utilities and regulation. So that was actually a pretty big fight to get it where it was now, but that's going forward. Other than that, there's nothing on the calendar for this week that we're following closely. But I'm more than happy, again, if you look at your list that was sent out by Gil and his group, please, if you have any questions, I can relay those to him, or if you have any concerns about something, just let me know, and I'm more than happy to sit down and go over it with you.
Okay. I'd like to go to Council Maishri, you have anything, Council Maishri, you want to add? Not sure I can see her picture. All right, any of the councils have any other comments or questions? We're good, we've got plenty of time, folks. So we're going to move now to Agenda Item C, Presentation of the Civil Service Process by Ms. Serena Knox, the Interim Civil Service Administrator. You can get it all on one card, that's amazing.
Chairman Gomez, I'm sorry, I couldn't find my unmute button, but I'm fine for now, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. So you're streaming.
And the, the slides on this, we printed them out for your reference in front of you, so it's what we're going to show on the screen.
Oh, there we go. Good evening, thank you for having me up for your presentation. Haven't used this clipper before. Okay, so tonight I've been asked to go a little bit over about the civil service process and kind of how it works and the history and purpose of what civil service is. So the Civil Service Commission is an elected body. We have three commissioners. They are mandated through the city charter that has outlined the commission's role, and they protect the employee rights and ensure accountability, and they handle appeals filed by the employees that have anything to do with hiring or promotions or disciplinary actions. This is the primary purpose of civil service and has remained constant for about the past two hundred years. So it was established originally by the Pendleton Act in eighteen eighty-three to oversee the implementation of merit-based hiring for government jobs. It was really put in to eliminate corrupt practices associated with the patronage system, and that started the practice of having to take civil service exams for certain jobs. And it also prevents elected officials and appointees from firing civil servants, removing civil servants from the influence of political patronage and partisan behavior. So that basically just means if you're going to hire somebody or fire somebody or discipline somebody, then it has to be transparent and clear, and it has to have a reason for it. And it has continued that way. In nineteen forty, state agencies were required to have a civil service for anyone that administers social security funds. In nineteen seventy-eight, they did split it into the Office of Personnel Management and the Office of the Merit Systems Protection Board, but other than that, it has remained pretty much the same. So for our rules and regulations, we have to have a merit system. So when we do job descriptions, you have to have something that it's based on. It can't just be what you think it might be, you have to have job requirements. Everything has to be transparent. All of our rules and regulations are publicly available on the city's website. Any employee can see it, and the public can see it. And it has to be fair. Whatever rules that there are have to apply to everyone, and all the employees are protected against discrimination and bias. So the responsibilities of the civil service office, we do the job marketing, the announcements, promotions, and the applicant sourcing. So when we have a job, civil service goes out and says, hey, everybody, we have a job, come apply for it. We set up all the testing for all the applicants that come in. We do the hiring and promotion part where we select the applicants that pass the test, and we send them over to HR. And also the Civil Service Commission does the appeals, grievances, and disciplinary hearings. The goal of all of that is to maintain a professional and ethical public workforce.
And, and just to go to the, the marketing side of it, civil service really goes out, they go to the job fairs, try to recruit people for positions that are open, anything like that. They're very active both on social media and attending these events in person and advertising for openings here in Pueblo.
So who's covered by civil service? We have our classified employees and we have some exempt positions. Almost all of the employees are classified employees, so that's all of our full-time staff. That's over many different departments and different roles. So the civil service covers pretty much everybody, and we make sure that everyone has job security and advancement opportunities. A few of the appointed staff are exempt from civil service roles. So we have classified and unclassified city employees. The classified employees are going to be all the general service that fall under PAGE, the FIRE.
PAGE is the union that covers the generals.
Sorry, that's the union. We have the non-management FIRE staff that are classified employees, and they also are in IAFF Union. We have the non-management police that are classified employees, and they are, have a union as well, IBPO. Then we have the management and administrative staff that are Class B. We don't have a union, but we generally follow PAGE. Then we have appointed staff that are unclassified, and the temporary and seasonal staff are unclassified. So in this, we were talking a little bit about the career fairs. So before there's ever even a job posting, the civil service goes to the career fairs. We have job boards, and we market the city of Pueblo as a place to come and work. We also have social media engagement. Civil service has a Facebook page, an X page, an Instagram page, and we have a LinkedIn page where we are able to interact with people. We sometimes get people who are interested in coming to Pueblo, but we may not have a specific job for them right now. But we want to keep them engaged because maybe we will in a couple of months. So we do interact with the people who talk to us on these different social media sites. Okay, so then we get to vacancies. A vacancy is when the number of staff that we have falls below our authorized positions. So we can't hire someone if there's not a vacancy, it has to have a vacancy for them. So every year we get the budget ordinance that goes through, and then we have a staffing ordinance. And that tells us exactly how many staff we have in what departments, and how much they're going to get paid, what classification they're going to be. And the appointed staff members are also part of that staffing ordinance. If we want to change the staffing ordinance, then we have to talk to the mayor about that and get her approval, and we also have to come to you and get your approval for any changes. Okay, and then when there is a vacancy, we still have to go to the mayor and make sure that we're going to fill that vacancy. Sometimes there are budgetary things we need to look at, sometimes there are other issues going on, so we might need to pause and review that position. And that is one of the things that HR does, they review the positions when there's a vacancy. If it's decided that they're going to fill it, then the department head and HR will work on that job description, make sure it's up to date, make sure the requirements are what they need it to be, and that it is current with what that person will be doing. Once they are happy with the job description, then they go to the job requisition, which kind of starts the process for us. When it comes to civil service, then we know we can start with a posting and get going on that position. So what we'll do is we'll post it. When we do that, that's not just putting it on the computer. When we put them out for posting, what that means is it goes out to job boards, automatic emails. We have sixty different sites that we send them to, military bases, workforce centers, college websites, job recruiting sites. We also put them on all our social media, such as Facebook, X, Instagram, and LinkedIn. So it's a big job putting all those out there. We will also announce it to all of the current city staff. We send out an email to let everyone know that a position is open. We make sure that our postings are in line with all applicable laws and regulations, including equal opportunity employment and ADA requirements. We want to encourage as many people as possible that are qualified to come and apply for these jobs. So when someone is interested in a job, they have to submit an application. All of our applicants go through the NeoGo portal and submit their application. And then every single application is screened. So we do have some auto screening that we do, but even at that, we have some people that have trouble with auto screening, and they will answer incorrectly, or they'll say they don't have a qualification, but they really do. Every single application is reviewed by an actual person. So our staff look at all of them. And as you can see from our little graph, we have had a huge increase in the number of applicants. Once everybody's screened, the ones that make it through the screening then need to go to the testing phase. So we have a written exam for every position, and we have some performance exams for some positions. Because we have a new agreement with Test Genius, we are able to offer remote testing for almost all of our positions now. So every applicant that, if they pass the test, then we screen them for any seniority points that need to be added, or any veterans' points that need to be added, but they have to pass the test first. Once all the testing is complete, then the applicants that pass the test get placed on the eligibility list. This is a list of all the applicants that passed. We send that list to the civil service commissioners, and they review the list and certify the list, making sure that our process is impartial and in accordance with established rules and practices. Once we have our list, we send the highest ranking candidates over to HR so that they can begin the interview process. The number of candidates that we send does vary. It depends on what unit, union they're in, and whether it was promotional or open to the public. Once HR gets the names, then they set up interviews. The interviews are always done by a panel, and they select the panel of at least three people to do the interviews. And what they're looking for is that the candidate is able to explain how they meet the minimum requirements of the job, their skills, their experience, to let them know they're suitable for the position. Once they pass through the interview, then they go through the selection pre-screening and will receive a conditional job offer. Different jobs have different requirements. So the next part's a little difficult to explain. Some of the public safety jobs, you have to have a psych assessment or a pre-psych suitability assessment. You have background checks, drug testing, physical exam. Different jobs have different needs. Once all of that is completed, then they get a formal offer, and they get moved to the I-9 verification, new hire work, new hire paperwork, and we get them scheduled for orientation. So that's a lot of steps. The timeline for hiring, it, it takes a while to get through everything. So from the time that a position is determined to be vacant and that we're going to fill it, it takes multiple steps and at least three different departments to work together to do it. We need HR, we have civil service, and we have the hiring department. Civil service does not determine what the minimum qualifications are. We're the ones that do the screening, so there's some separation there to make sure that the department is asking for what they really want, and civil service is looking for the people that need it. So the amount of time that it takes depends on what kind of position it is, whether it's open to the public, if it's promotional, and it's also affected by union rules because we have to post jobs for certain amounts of time. And then background checks also add to how long it takes. So I gave you an example of one of our hiring calendars that kind of shows you how long they have to be posted. So an open job for the public has to be posted for twenty-one days, and then we have an appeal period, and then they get to the exam, and then the list will be certified at the civil service meeting. The promotional ones are similar, except that the posting period is a little bit shorter, and there's a secondary appeal time where they can have an appeal for an exam if they need to, or if they have any questions about the content of the exam. The time period is about the same. For promotional positions, they can be done faster because most of them do not require a new background check or a new drug screening. We can usually skip those because they're already employees. So the overall time period can be reduced to approximately six to eight weeks from the very beginning of there being a determination of a vacancy until the person is actually able to start. New hires for the publicly available positions can sometimes be filled with eight to ten weeks, but there is some length that takes longer if they are in one of the public safety positions because their background check is very extensive. So those do take longer, and it can be anywhere from sixteen to eighteen weeks, depending on how long that background check takes. For some of our current challenges, adapting to technology and the workforce dynamics, we have a lot of new computer-related technology that can really help us make a difference in how quickly we can get things done. On the downside, we have some people who have difficulty using computers and doing their applications online. So we still do a lot of calling and talking to the applicants, multiple emails trying to help them and guide them through the process. Employer retention is a challenge. We also have an increase in workload in the number of applicants. We have a huge number, especially for like police patrol or office assistant. We have a huge number of applicants that every single one is read by, by a person. We read them all. And then the length of time from application to hire. So in closing, our, the civil service job is essentially to be a safeguard for Pueblo's workforce. We ensure fair employment practices, foster a culture of merit and accountability, and promote equal opportunities for everybody.
Okay, are you concluding? Find anything else?
No, I'm just going to say that you saw firsthand, Councilor Gomez, you went to the interview process as an observer, but how long it took from when you wanted that position listed to now. It, it does take some time, and I know it can be frustrating or seem frustrating, but it takes a while.
Let me just jump in here and read a response I gave to Brian almost right after it. I was really more concerned about the fairness of the process on how the process runs in general. So I wasn't there to pick a, a candidate. But I'll tell you what I was impressed in is the impartiality and up to eleven, twelve questions that were asked by three particular people, not civil service. They were observers, as I was. And I'm telling you, I walked away pretty impressed. So, and what are you nervous about? You did great.
Oh, thank you.
See, she was so nervous, but you did a good job. Anybody got anything else for those folks? Council of Boston?
I was interested in the background checks. What, what, can you tell me what they are? What kind of background checks are you talking about? Does it depend on the position? And who do you utilize for these background checks?
Okay, so that is a very good question, because you're right, it is different. So we have a third-party company that does most of our background checks. Yeah, we use Simply Verified, so that's a third-party that we use that does those. Um, the police background checks are a different company. They are a lot more extensive, and they take, they take a long time because they go through not only your employment history, but also an extensive reference check. Uh, that company is Pinnacle Investigations.
And uh, are there certain things that disqualify you automatically when they find something out of your background, like a felony or?
Each, each job is different. Just because you have a felony does not mean that you're automatically disqualified from all jobs. There are some types of convictions or felonies that are automatic bars for police. For everything else, it really kind of depends on what it is, how long it's been, what job you're applying for, what kind of certification or license you have to have. There are a different set of convictions or felonies that can stop you from getting a CDL. So if you're in a job that needs a CDL, then you would be barred from that. So just because you have a conviction doesn't mean you can't have a job. It just means you might not be able to have a certain license for certain positions.
And then the other thing I was interested in is the exam. I'm assuming that these exams uh, uh, are purchased from a qualified company that does that sort of thing. Are those exams different for the positions? And uh, can you explain that whole process of examine, uh, of a, a test someone has to take in order to get on the list to be hired?
Yeah, okay. So yes, each exam is different. Um, if you have applied for one job and then you apply for a different job, you do have to take the exam again because they are different. We do have a third-party provider that takes care of the police and fire exams. Um, I don't know for certain where all of the other exams were purchased from because they are different depending on what kind of position it is and how long ago it was. We also work with Test Genius that provides our critical exam for dispatchers. And then we also have the ability to create new exams if we have a new position. When we have to do that, then there are different exams we can use as a base, and then we work with the department head to add any questions or delete any questions that aren't relevant to that position.
Uh, and then my last question has to do with uh, the, the, I guess you would call it the Civil Service Commission. The world that we exist in, you know, I think most cities like ours that are home-ruled, uh, most cities in Colorado use the civil service because you don't want, uh, you don't want uh, you know, uh, positions filled because of politicians. You, you make the, the, the plane even so that everybody has a chance. But is there any impact to what's happening, happening nationally right now? Where there is a, an effort really to, to destroy the Civil Service Commission uh, edicts uh, for federal workers? Is there any connection between Pueblo, Colorado and any federal uh, position, or we, we have that right to do that anytime we want without federal interference?
And I think your question's got multiple layers to it.
The, short answer to that is no.
I mean, I, I could get into that if you want. The um, different HR credentialing company, SHRM especially has been doing a lot of workshops on what we can and can't say and how it does affect us. Short version, I will say that for the city of Pueblo, we work on equal access. So if somebody needs some kind of accessibility, then we help them with that. But we are able to hire and want to hire anybody who is eligible for the job. That has been our stance, so we didn't have to change anything on our sites.
Yeah, no, I'm just concerned about the influence the federal government would have in trying to tell Pueblo, Colorado what to do, and I think the answer is no. And I guess that was the answer I wanted, but thank you. Council of Boston, please.
I was just gonna say, I went through this whole process uh, right out of college, probably in twenty twenty-one. I was applying for a job through the city and uh, the uh, the tests are pretty intensive, I would say. Um, and I thought the process was really good and fair as well, so I'd just say keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Council Latina.
Yes, uh, we have a couple of uh, members of the commission here. Um, I would like to ask them if there's anything like to say. We have Sharon Bonner and Eric Javano. Uh, they're doing a great job, obviously. Is there anything that you would like to ask Sharon or, or, or Eric?
Hello, I am Eric Javado. I'm known for being outspoken. I'm a retired attorney, and I can say the Fifth Amendment reserves to the states all rights not delegated to the federal government. Therefore, any attempt by the federal government to interfere in civil service commission in Pueblo, Colorado is beyond the re- realm and of their authority. So they would have no legal standing to come and tell us what to do as a civil service commission. Now, the state could, of course, but not the federal government.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sharon? Thank you, Eric.
As this, as a civil, civil service commissioner, now, the only, the only level would be city government is all we're going to be uh, concerned with. Right now, federal, that's a whole different level of government, so it, there's no way. I mean, I worked for the county for many, many years, and even with the county and the city, yeah, there was nothing that was worked together in hiring. So civil service is the important part of the city. And it's gonna stay that way, I think, for a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I see President Mark Allen, please.
Yeah, thank you for the report. That's interesting information. You know, I've always heard and I, you, you gotta take everything you hear with a grain of salt. But you know, I've always heard that the Civil Service Commission is a barrier to the city when it comes to hiring like police officers, simply because of the time that it takes to get it done. So one of the things that I had heard, maybe you can tell me that it's, it's wrong and I'm just uh, hearing crazy stuff. Like after the, the, somebody applies to be a police officer, it could be upwards of six to eight months before they ever get the call. And the problem comes in is that if somebody's looking for a job today and applying, they may have a little leeway uh, before they uh, accept another position. But we're calling them up six to eight months later from when we posted the job and they applied. And, you know, they're already working somewhere as a police officer. So if that's true, what can we do to fix that? I mean, if that's an issue, then it needs to be fixed, whether we use different uh, uh, providers for the background checks, whatever, I don't know. But do you think that's a problem?
Yes, it's um, better since the um.
Okay, so it doesn't take that long anymore. So because of the mayor oral orders that went in that allow us to speed up the process, we are now able to post positions for police officers every twenty-eight days. So every twenty-eight days, we're doing that whole cycle of screening applications, testing, referral, interviews, backgrounds. All of it starts every twenty-eight days. We're also able to hire people for police officer positions in what's called a mentorship program if the academy isn't ready to start at the time the person is hired. They're also running their academies, I believe, four times a year. Yeah, they're still doing four times a year, but because they can do the intermittent hiring, you're not having to wait six or eight months to get that call.
And I, I think that some of the frustration too is the Civil Service Commission only meets once a month. I think one way to fix that would be to have and request that the Civil Service Commi- Commission meet maybe twice a month. Um, there is the ability to request special meetings for them, so there's been some instances where we needed to get a, a, a list certified or something like that, and um, we have requested they meet and something just didn't work out, but then you have to wait you know, a month until you could get this list certified to get the person in there and you go through that. I, I really think personally that if we had more than one meeting a month, that would, that would help out greatly with the hiring process.
That, that helps. The other question I have is does the Civil Service Commission do anything more than what a human resources department could do within the city? So in other words, what I'm asking is if the human resources department of the city was giving, given the same tasks that the Civil Service Commission is given, could they perform those?
They could, but then you would be looking at potential conflicts of interest. If the HR department wrote all the job descriptions, determined all the qualifications, and did all the screening and the testing, then you would be looking at potential conflict of interest. The Civil Service Commission also has roles beyond just hiring. They also do the grievances and appeals. So if civil service does the hearing, the commissioners do the hearing for a grievance, but HR was the one that did the investigation or helped the department with their investigation, you could be looking at potential conflict of interest.
So when the Civil Service Commission Act happened, and a lot of these, these rules and commissions and so on uh, uh, came about, there was probably a lot of things that happened that were, you know, not good, uh, which the Civil Service Commission was created to help not happen within a municipality, a state, or a federal government. But I guess the argument could be is that employment law has advanced so much that the question then comes, and the question that I get is do you really need a civil service commission with all the laws advancing as far as they've advanced? Is this really necessary? So for instance, what you said is if there's a conflict of interest or whatever, couldn't that be handled through the local government, through ordinances and, and uh, different areas? Again, I, I'm not sure. I'm just asking a specific question.
That's true. Um, and then um, what Mr. Javano had pointed out is that the civil service commissioners are elected. They are not employees of the city. So they are truly an independent body that hears appeals and grievances. So they don't have to answer directly to the city because when there is a, a difference of opinion, if a person says, oh, I was, did not get this promotion, but I should have, then they have the ability to bring that in and file an appeal about that. And the commissioners can hear that appeal while the HR has worked with the department to hire the person that they did hire. So it resolves that conflict.
Got it. Well, thank you. You answered my questions. I appreciate the work that you guys do. It's very important work and I don't take it for granted at all, so thank you for what you do.
Council Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have a couple of questions, Ms. Knox. One, I'm curious, so for the jo- all the many job fairs that your office goes to, where, in what area geographically, do you have the most success at recruiting?
That's a good one. Um, numerically speaking, the most people that we hire is police patrol because that's the highest percentage of people that we have. So if you were to go by the data that we have, then the best results that we have received is when we do the job fairs for Connect With a Vet and the ones at CSUS, I'm sorry, CSU, Pueblo, and the ones at Fort Carson.
Okay, so more locally, not like outs- really outside of Colorado.
We do market outside of Colorado. For some reason, we have had multiple applicants from Minnesota. Uh, great, you know, come on down.
It's warmer. It's warmer here.
Um, we do, uh, and with our new system that we have, ATRAC, which is just coming online, we are able to source candidates. So today I was reviewing some resumes for people in California and Iowa and Ohio. There are people who wanna move, so when they check their little button that says, yes, contact me and I'm willing to relocate, then we can talk to those people about opportunities that we have here.
And when you're going to job fairs that are outside of Pueblo County, um, and you know, you're really, you're marketing Pueblo to come work in and live in and play in, do you all collaborate with the chamber who's doing a similar thing?
Sort of. They have a, a, I don't know how you describe it. They have a whole website about.
Sure, visit Pueblo.
Yes, that's what it's called. They have a whole website about that. So we are able to link our career pages to that. So you can get to theirs from ours, and it works the other way. From theirs, you can get to ours.
Sure. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to even push that collaboration farther as they're going to events and different con- conferences and things for them to be like, hey, not only should you come visit Pueblo, but have you thought of like moving here permanently and working for us?
We do have a great opportunity with the new system that we have, uh, ATRAC. Um, we can put little QR codes on brochures, pamphlets, anything we wanna put them on. And when the people scan it, if they choose to put in their name and email address, we will now be able to reach out to them. We can send them emails, we can send them postings. So it makes it a lot faster and easier for us to catch up with people that we meet in passing or at different fairs.
Okay. Just something to think about, you know, moving forward. Um, my second question is, I'm curious how um, are, you know, for no new positions for this fiscal year, how, how is that going to impact your office?
We had some new positions, but they were mostly promotional in the fire department. Um, so basically what that does for us is it creates, we still have to run promotional postings. So anytime you wanna promote somebody, you still have to do what we talked about with that process. The people apply, they get screened, they have to take a test, and then they get promoted. And we also have, all through the year, people come, people go. So if a person that already works here gets promoted, you still have a vacancy. It just moves down the line.
Sure.
So when you promote at a higher level, that trickle-down effect can take six to eight months until you actually get to where you hire a brand-new person, depending on what level they were at.
Okay.
So we have plenty of work to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Regina Maitri, please. Do you have anything? Okay, guess we're, we're good? Anybody else?
Hi.
We're okay? Mr. McCain.
Just thinking back to um, President Aleph's question on it, um, I, I think one way that we can improve civil service in the, the hiring process is I think of some of the, the rules and um, not necessarily rules, but process where, you know, you have ten days for an appeal or a certain amount of days for one thing. I think that that goes back to when you had a mail letters where you could probably squish that down to three days versus ten instead of having, you know, stacked dates for the mail to get to the house. I, I'm, um, on the, the backend of civil service, which I look at as protecting the employees, so if you have general staff, um, they're protected by their union. So if, you know, somebody gets mad and fires you for no reason, you have reunion protection and civil service. That comes up, but for exempt or class B employees, um, say that I came in mad in a bad mood one day and decided to fire Serena for no reason all other than I was just in a bad mood. That, that's where she doesn't have the union protection, but she still does have the, the civil service protection at the end. But I, I agree. I think there's a way to clean it up and modernize it, I guess you would say. And, and that's something that we're kind of looking at right now too, so.
Okay, Mayor, you have anything, Mayor?
Not for Serena, um, Chair Gomez, but uh, Chief Knoller did have some legislative updates that he wanted to provide if you'll allow.
We have a little bit of time. Are you concluding? We're good? Ryan, anything else? Anybody else? Thank you, folks. Chief Knoller?
Thank you for the time, uh, Council, uh, or session chair and counselor members. Um, there's a couple of uh, criminal justice-related bills that I wanted to discuss, uh, and just put on your uh, on your page, uh, to be paying attention to. Uh, the first one is House Bill twelve oh six, which is extreme indifference, offensives, not offenses, not causing death. So currently, right now, if an individual shoots into a occupied structure, a house, or into a crowd, um, what we are doing is charging with attempted first-degree murder with extreme indifference. The DA's office has been very good about prosecuting those cases, uh, and we've got some very good outcomes from those cases. And currently, under the law, the way it is written today, when that event happens, it's a class-three felony. So first-degree murder would be a class-two felony. It's one, one class below that. This bill would take that down to a class-five felony. So, so what's the big deal, right? It's still a felony. The problem is, there's also a bill that's being forwarded that is a House Bill twelve fourteen, appropriate use of prison beds. That bill would make the judges, if they're going to sentence somebody to actual jail or prison time for that classified felony, to create a separate record about how other factors like probation, GPS tracking, uh, counseling, uh, the list goes on and on and what those options potentially could be, why those situations would not work to change this person's behavior. And it basically sets the judge up in a position where they are incentivized or basically direct. And it basically sets the judge up in a position where they are incentivized or basically directed to try alternative means to jail or prison for those individuals that commit those Class Five felonies. Now, that's Class Five felonies across the board, but as I just said, this, uh, attempted, uh, murder with extreme indifference would then be a Class Five if nobody was, was injured. If somebody was shot and seriously injured, um, then it would be a Class Three felony. If they were shot and just bodily injured, like they got winged, it would be a Class Four felony. And if there's no injuries, it would be a Class Five felony. Um, again, this is, this is similar to the, uh, legislation that we have seen over the last several years that takes tools away from our, our department in order to enforce laws in our community and a standard of behavior that we accepted in, in the city of Pueblo. For some perspective, last year, we had, I believe, a hundred and seven shootings in the city of Pueblo, and we had a hundred and sixty seven drive-by shootings. So we have a serious problem with this violent crime in our community. And these tools being taken away and these offenders being given probation, GPS tracking or whatever, and put back out into our community is not going to solve this problem. Uh, we're gonna end up repeatedly arresting these individuals. It takes quite some time to put a case together on an individual on drive-by shootings. Um, it's a lot of detective work, a lot of incredible work by our patrol officers, a lot of forensic evidence that has to come into play. And usually, when we're arresting an individual for these cases, you're talking about five or six charges at five or six different shootings, uh, that we are linking together to arrest an individual on. Um, I think it's important for counsel to be aware of this. Um, i- it's my recommendation that, um, if you feel like it, that you reach out to our, uh, senators and representatives and discuss your feelings on these, on this matter. Um, but again, it's another indication, along with, uh, House Bill eleven forty seven, which is the municipalization. Um, I can't remember the exact, uh, basically, it, it makes us have to, our standards in the municipal courts, our sentences would have to be the same for collateral, uh, charges in the state system here. If that makes sense. Um, so for example, we have habitual offender offense, uh, here in Pueblo that, that counsel approved, uh, was voted on, passed. If we have an individual who commits a theft on a merchant three times and is convicted, then they could be sentenced up to an additional year in jail. Um, this, this, uh, House Bill eleven forty seven would make that only a, uh, ten day sentence and a three hundred dollar fine. Um, theft up to two hundred dollar, two thousand dollars would be a hundred and twenty days in jail or a one thousand dollar fine. So you're not even paying the fine for the same amount of stuff that they stole. Um, a- and this is another example of where the state legislature is trying to whittle away our ability to enforce laws. And then when I come before you, I'm being asked, what am I gonna do about it? Um, I need the tools to do stuff with, with this. I need the tools to be able to have my officers do their job. This is one of the reasons why we have a failure or a problem with retention. It's not the only reason, but one of the reasons is my officers can't do their jobs. They, they, they have to deal with these individuals over and over and over again, and nothing happens. And if the legislator keeps, legislature keeps down this path, as they indicate over the last four years that they are willing to do, it is not going to get better for our ability to do our job. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, those are the three main bills that I'd like to bring to your attention right now, there are some others that are percolating, but I haven't seen the final drafts. Um, so that's all I have.
Counselor Latina.
It's not a question, Chief. It's what do we need to do to help, and I'm, I'm there with you. I'll do anything that I can to help, anything, anything that I can. I just came from an incident on the east side, just before I came to this, the council, where your officers in the sheriff's department were cooperating in an effort to take care of a, a situation that occurred on the east side of, of, of the Fourth Street Bridge. And, uh, so please, I'll help any way I can, if I need to go to the state legislature, I will. The language won't be very good at, at, when I address them, so I may have to have some, you know, some coaching, but, uh,
Well, if you're asking my opinion, I think, uh, the, that, but we need, we need people to be loud. We need the people to let Denver know that this is not what we want in the city of Pueblo. Um, we need to let the other cities know that this is not how we want things done in the city of Pueblo. That's my humble opinion, I'm not speaking as a chief of police, you asked what I thought, I'm telling you.
And I appreciate that, and again, let me know what you need me to do and I'll be there, I'll, I'll go up there with you. I have no problem in doing that, and again, it'll be in my tone of voice.
Counselor Flores.
Uh, can you give me those, uh, bills again?
Yes, sir, uh, the one with municipal court, uh, the sentencing is House Bill twenty five eleven forty seven. Uh, the one that covers the extreme indifference is House Bill twenty five twelve oh six. And the one that's called appropriate use of prison beds is House Bill twelve fourteen. One thing I didn't talk about on the House Bill twelve fourteen, uh, uh, bill is it also creates a presumption of parole when somebody goes before the parole board. And what that means is the parole board has to assume they're gonna get parole. It has to be presented evidence that strongly, strongly says why they shouldn't get parole in order for that, for them to turn down that, that person's parole. Um, a- and, and frankly, the way our parole boards are operating now, that's essentially what they're doing. But the problem with this is at some point, there will be policy changes on how we do parole, and this will enshrine those, those current, these current policies into, into law. Um, so.
Okay, Counselor Martinez, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Chief, when you said it was a hundred and sixty seven drive-bys, do you happen to know what the comparables are across the state?
I don't know, but, um, cities our size, there's nobody that compares to us.
Okay. Yeah, I, I ask because literally not a couple of weeks ago, I got a constituent call from a single mom who lives in my district, whose son's room was of, in, uh, a, a victim of the, you know, drive-by with extreme indifference, and it's terrifying.
Absolutely.
Um, so one, I appreciate you helping out with that constituent call. Um, and two, I think that the timing is perfect to let me understand, it just, it totally shifted my perspective on it, especially now that I am a mom, I can't imagine my own kids get room being shot up, so anyway, um, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Anybody else, Counselor Mastry, you there?
Yes, I'm here. Finally, finally, I found out how to work this, even though I practiced it several times before you asked me a question, when you'd asked me a question, I couldn't work it. But anyways, Chief, um, or Mr. McCain, could you please tell us who the architect and the sponsors, who's sponsoring these bills?
Two of them, um, Senator Nick Henrickson was a prime sponsor on Failure to Appear, and then he's the Senate sponsor on the Transparency Municipal Court bill. And I can pull up who the other sponsors are on these other ones.
Yeah, I don't have those names, uh, readily available, ma'am, sorry.
Thank you. Um, the other thing, Chief, is I've firsthand seen how the, um, well, the tracking devices work on the ankle monitors. And what is, would be interesting is to hear what the, uh, reoffend, you know, what the rate of reoffense is in Pueblo, uh, specifically in our parole program, the ones that you're, you know, they're reoffending and you're arresting. Um, I, I'd like to see how, um, high that rate is, especially, um, since I've seen some failed attempts, uh, I mean, failed ankle monitor situations and glitches with the ankle monitors. Um, I think it, you know, the public has the right to know that, um, the ankle monitor system is, is almost a failed system.
Uh, I couldn't agree more. Um, as far as the rate of reoffending in the parole system, I wouldn't have that information. That would be information that you would have to give from Colorado Department of Corrections, uh, parole, and I don't know, I don't know how exactly they're tracking that.
Okay, but are you guys, so when you, um, are arresting suspects, um, with ankle monitors on, um, attached to them, are you tracking that within your department?
We're not tracking that specifically, um, it might be possible, but it wouldn't necessarily be a hundred percent accurate for us to track how often we've arrested a offender. But we don't necessarily track that when we, be, because there's no outcome that's gonna change because of we document that. Um, that we don't really track how many times they've cut off their ankle monitor or, or otherwise disabled it, um, in our, in our police reports, no, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, because I think, um, from what I've seen, some of them are wearing it while they're, uh, apparently, some of them are wearing it while they're being picked up for crimes, so it's just been, um, you know, I, I, I work with, um, uh, reentry people, um, and, um, I've been around them when the ankle monitors have gone off, and I said, well, aren't you supposed to call somebody? Oh, no, it's just a glitch. We call our parole officer, he just tells us, you know, so I, I've experienced seeing that for myself. You know, and, oh, if I call the parole officer, he's just gonna ask me what I'm calling about. And so I thought, that's kinda weird, but, you know, I'd like to see what that actually means from the parole officer's side, too. That's why I was asking for parole to come in and, and just let us know how they are handling their programs. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief, anybody else, we're good? Thanks, Chief. Before we conclude or adjourn, I just wanna give you a work session update. Uh, just so you know, the entire mayor and city council staff met together for our annual city council retreat from eight AM to four PM two days ago on Saturday. And I think that's important for the entire citizenry to know that. Each council had an opportunity to outline their goals, and we had a very open and transparent conversation between the legislative and executive branches. We did not and can't vote, but a preliminary consensus reached on several important issues that we will bring and revisit back into the chamber. At this time, is anybody up anything else? We're adjourned.